Call this meeting to order, uh, first order of business is our financials. Questions, comments on it? John O'Meara taking motion approved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, ninety. Got, uh, two sets of minutes of regularization for last month, and then we had a little specialization. Find them more motion or if they do have you.
I make a motion, that would approve both sets of minutes.
Motion need a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Alright. I don't have a stain since I wasn't here last month at that, at that meeting.
Good.
Make a motion, we pass.
Second?
I'm swigging.
All in favor?
Alright.
People in their rural water membership didn't use any of that 2.1? Motion to pay though?
Make a motion to pay that? I'll second.
All in favor?
Go ahead.
Hey, Madam County Highway Department, that's, uh, bill for some of the, uh, mix that we've been getting here. I make a motion, I'm gonna tell you that.
Second?
All in favor? And we've been kinda holding up on that insurance, uh, who got it, and, uh, close to City Health insurance as well. I didn't know that you got a chance to do that.
I did, I, I have a lot of questions, Pete, uh, as far as, well, uh, if we're gonna talk about the health insurance first.
It don't matter if we, we won their vote, they're voting for the doctor.
Yeah, the health insurance, I looked at all the, all the proposals, and Anthem has the largest network right now, as opposed to the other two, so that's, that's an advantage there. The Humana, we can go ahead and cross that out probably, because it's way overpriced for, for, for the coverages compared to the other two. The only, uh, the health insurance with Southern Insurance that they brought to us, the positive for them, they got dental coverage. Whereas Anthem doesn't have dental coverage. So, but you're limited to providers with, with the Southern Insurance Services proposal with, uh, with United Healthcare, United Healthcare does not have as many, like, they don't have, um, I think it's just Missouri Delta that you can go there, you can't even go to St. Francis or Southeast Hospital with them, as far as I know. I don't know what, has Allen, is Allen the, the agent of night, not agent, that is, Lisa, Lisa Brissell? Has she talked to you, Pete, or Heather, has she talked to you about anything?
Hey, I don't know.
I mean, you're very limited as far as providers go with, with United Health, uh, like I said, but with Anthem, you've got a large network of providers with Anthem, but it is a little bit higher, of course you pay for that, that's what you pay for, you get a lot more access to providers. I mean, is, is, is dental a big issue for?
I haven't heard anybody.
Jackie, is dental, is dental a big issue for you or Judy, having dental coverage?
Dental.
Is your be? I, I would recommend to the board that we stay with Anthem, just because of the large network of providers that's, that's offered. You guys have any thoughts on that, Chris?
Thoughts?
Just, yeah, just the truth is, but that sounds good to me.
Well, that's all I know about it, I mean, that's, we have to make a decision as a board, and that's what I know about it.
Well, the only, like you said, the only difference there is on, on the dental, is I don't think anyone of that purpose, say, in state that they want to have that. How's the rest of the board feel, go with that one?
I make a motion, and you go with Anthem.
Okay.
A second?
Alright.
Now with the, with the property in my building, all the buildings and, and everything, I, I kinda wish that Allen could come over and talk to us in person a little bit more, as, as, cause Allen's on this, right Allen?
Yeah. Uh, and he probably would if I didn't know, uh, I didn't ask him.
The reason, the reason I ask, the reason I say that is because, uh, in the company that we're with now, EMC Insurance, through Allen, right now, there's seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for, um, for the building on the water treatment plant. Is that the coverage for the new water building, I mean, water treatment plant?
I believe they increased it, as I called after it was done.
Okay. And showing, uh, showing a mortgagee on location two, which is the machine shop, we don't have a mortgage on the machine shop, do we? So there's some things that need to be changed in this quote. Do we even insure the gym anymore? Are we supposed to?
Libility.
Just liability.
It's liability, no property.
Any of these other buildings, all, all we do is carry liability.
And the oldville elementary school, we don't carry property insurance on that, okay? The, the, the EMC we have now, it's not the same coverages as what we put in Mopern, Mopern's building coverages are a lot different. A lot lower than what we have right now in the EMC, uh, policy. And the deductible, the property deductible on the EMC is five thousand dollars, for the Mopern quote, it's a thousand dollar deductible, so that's, that's a big difference in the two, two.
Well, she sent everything over to me, she said Missouri Rural has the most property coverage with the lower premium. I think they put in more than EMC did.
Well, with Missouri Rural too, we don't know, I mean, they give us a, a number here of, of total property, but they don't tell us what each property is insured for. I'd like to see, or I think the board would like to see what's insured, each building is insured for. Um, I'm looking through this quote here with Missouri Rural right now, and it shows total insured value of three million, one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, but that doesn't tell us what buildings are insured for. So I kinda like to know that. And the auto deductibles for Mopern, the auto deductibles is a thousand dollars for all the autos on the comprehensive and collision. The EMC, the auto deductibles, five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars on, on comp and collision on some of the vehicles, and just liability on the other vehicles, so, so they're not really the same as far as the quotes go, they're not really matching apples and apples.
When did we have to make a decision on that?
Our insurance is done with at the end of the year.
Yeah, the first.
We have to have a policy decided by.
We're gonna do, or if you wanna, we can see, we can get Allen over here, and then we try to get some figures from, uh, Missouri Rural, so that way we can have a breakdown from them, and try to get together, uh, I don't know, as soon as we can.
Yeah, we have to call a special session or a court meeting, yeah, for that. Is it, I mean, Allen obviously is gonna have to re-quote this after he changes figures and things like that, so, what do you think the fastest way to do that, how to do that?
Well, um, why don't we do this, why don't you give him a call? For the re-quote, and then, and then we'll set up a meeting, we'll find out, uh, how soon he can give, uh, how soon he can, uh, put that together.
That's not gonna violate any?
As far as I know, it's not, I mean.
For me to call him and say, hey, I only had this meeting tonight?
Yeah, well, that's what this board did, right? We'll give you authority tonight to make the call, so that way that, that you can ask, uh, him to re-quote it to us, and then tell him that we're gonna want him to come to the meeting, so, uh, I'll be calling him and try to get him set up as soon as we can get ourselves together with him.
Cause I think there's just too many variables here, there's too many things that are different in each one of these quotes, that for us to make a good decision tonight.
Alright, let's just do that, we'll table it tonight, and, and if you can give him a call tomorrow, and, and then, uh, just have him, have him call me back, and then I'll, I'll set up, set up a meeting, then as soon as we can. I'll find out what things payable he has or has to do, he can bring it, and then I'll try to get the board together. Alright, everybody? Alright, uh, let's see. Um, I think you have a copy of, of the budget proposal, I think if I had a copy of it, um, and actually, uh, I might, I made some changes on it. Because it's, is there a mark on that?
No, I did, I mean, three years breakdown, I think you should have gotten that.
Yeah. Anyhow. What we done in nineteen and eighteen, and then the actual expense that we had, is, is the breakdown that I'm working, worked with, um, but if they didn't get, if they didn't get these figures in, on their accounts.
They have the expenses and the income for nineteen, eighteen, seventeen.
Okay, they just had them cheap, okay, mine are all together.
Yeah, I just broke it down into department.
Okay. The changes there that I was proposing were gonna be on the water and sewer, and I think on the fire department. The rest of them I left to say. Let's see, on the water and sewer, uh, okay, last year, I think we budgeted, um, what, on this, what else, I guess, we budgeted one twenty-five, and we actually exceeded that because, you know, all the changes we've done. Of course, our budget's gonna be different due to the fact that our water rate's gonna be completely different this year. So, we actually went with, uh, our expenses for, uh, this year were one sixty-four.
On the water?
Yes. Anyhow, if you, if you write down, if you write in on the water, put one sixty-five, and then on the sewer, put sixty, as far as the budget's concerned, and then that'll help you kinda figure. What I wanna do is, uh, now let's just propose, and then let's give you a chance to work your figures, and then we'll get back together. And actually, if, uh, if we want to, whenever we meet, uh, for the insurance deal, if you've had a chance to review yours, uh, and wanna bring up, uh, your figures, what I'd like to do is get something put together, so that way maybe we can pass a budget by the first of the year.
Do that budget and the insurance in the same meeting though, does that have to be a separate meeting?
Well, I don't think it, uh, if, if we do a special meeting and write down that that's what we're doing, you know, a special session, you have to say that, uh, be specific about what it's for. So if we're gonna put two items on there, that's what we'll put in, and that's the only two items that we'll discuss at that time. Anyhow, the other change was on the, uh, fire department, uh, I'll put that at fifteen. And, and that way, like I said, we can, we can, you can look at those figures along with the figures that we, that you already have there, and, uh, and try to work that out there. Had finally got her man to pass that down again. From, uh, you managed to come down, so we marked our houses that, uh, we had condemned, um, the only comprehensive one is still that, that one yellow house.
Ain't finished up by the person, it's family grand, I remember.
And, uh, anyhow, uh, while, while he was here, I had Bo get with, uh, Carl, and they went down there and looked at that thing, see where, where that thing was at, cause I haven't seen any action or anything going on up there. But, uh, I think Carl went down there and he looked it over, uh, and he talked to the guy, I guess, Carl.
Yeah, talking for next time about the person, it's hip and grand, I remember, it's been played with too long.
Anyhow, that's where we stand on that, the other, the other, uh, I think there's three other locations. Yeah, one on Marshall Street, it's, uh, I can't give you the actual address, one on North Benton, and one on South Benton. Uh, North Benton, one is, my note is the old Bowman and House. Uh, one, South Benton, uh, used to belong to the factory.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Say, on the houses, y'all got condemned, I noticed in the newspaper the other night, it says, they sent this lady up there, where she had printed out, so, since the place was condemned, what was her, she was planning on doing, is there any ways you can do that, send it to people, say, we need something, cause thirty days, it's coming back.
Well, normally that's what we do, uh, once it's condemned, they're sending a letter right away, and tell, tell them that, uh, you know, we expect them to do something, notify us, whatever they want to do. And, and they are notified that way. But, you know, legally, we gotta give them whatever law requires, you know, and normally they get a lot more time than that, because we've worked with the county to get these things down, and they, uh, just can do it to certain times, just like now, they should have been here four or five months ago, but they couldn't, they couldn't get here, and, and, so we're just down to the form of these, these houses. Okay. That's all that I have, you guys got?
I just got one thing, there's been some citizens come to me on, in Westacre, wanting to know about gravel out there, I guess, Southern County, and Madam County can't grade, but there's no gravel out there.
Uh, just talked to Bo, I think it was yesterday, uh, the company that, that was doing the asphalt, left a bunch of, uh, gravel over on the build side over there, and, uh, I got Bo went over and looked at it, he's gonna use it as fill, so I'd serve the spots where it's just real bad. I did talk to the guy that, that, uh, the county, um, and I told him, I say, you know, I'd like to see the skits, just they'll, they'll donate, uh, so much gravel every so often, and I asked him about that too. And, uh, anyhow, so that's coming as well, uh, but, uh.
So, they, they don't have enough out there for the county to grade?
They should be, yeah, we've got, we got plenty of, pretty good powder there, that we can start putting in, but, but right now, it's a big water hole, I don't know how much, really making, uh, a big, big mess, uh, should be a start on some games.
Alright.
Got that thing?
So, I'm gonna get you up there, Pete.
Uh, Bo said that they got, they got the, uh, transmission in it, uh, he was talking about the pump, we put some, uh, universal on some dry shaft. Bo's supposed to take him to the PTO and stuff, and then we put that all in there today, so, uh, hopefully that's coming pretty quick, and that's what I was telling Bo, if we're gonna haul that gravel out there, we can load that truck and that vehicle, it'll wait for us to get down there. That's in the make too. Jackie?
A little information?
Of course you can't sit here and go through it all, you wanna discuss any of it with, with the board or?
The individual's working at part-time work, and, and right now, in some, some weeks, it may be able to be full-time, so we just kinda leave it open. You know, not take six, forty hours, but, you know, basically hires part-time with the availability to, to work full-time hours when, when they can.
Have we given any thought about what kind of salary we're talking about?
I told them the exact same pay that we discussed last time, that was a ten dollars an hour. I hope this will ease the blow.
So, uh, what, what are you, uh, you thinking that, uh, this person's gonna come overboard if you, once you, have, have you interviewed him yet, or talked to him?
She's experienced, they say her first.
Yeah, well, I could, I could tell that, I mean, but I didn't know if you'd had a chance to talk to him, see what's?
No, I want to see what the board did first, that way I'd be okay if she did fly out, or we, we just go ahead and put her on board.
We all make?
I think Jim wants her, he should work with her too, about it. I just, I mean, I think anybody's gonna work for ten dollars an hour doing that job, you can't turn them away.
Part-time, so, where, where does this person live, I'm seeing where they live.
Eastford.
Eastford. They're gonna drive all the way from Eastford, they're part-time?
I guess. They're willing to.
Well, you gotta, you gotta keep your hours up, and, I mean, you have to stay employed as a police officer.
The last guy drove from Murray, I mean, we've been dropped, blood wasted, cause we're, we're just working on it.
I mean, we need to authorize him if he wants to hire him. With, the way we've always done, we've connected up to him on the hire, because of that position, he's gotta, uh, be able to rely on this person or that one another. Of course, he's the owner of all that, but, uh, of course he has to have the authority to hire, and then the board's willing to set the salary, so, uh, the board's fine with it, uh, motion it out, and then we can go forward there.
Do we have an incentive for them to stay, like, you said that, I thought we talked before, and it was only ten dollars is what we agreed to pay? Is there an incentive, like, where we could, if she does answer the phone, and she does show up like she's supposed to, after six months, giving her twenty-five cents or something to?
We've always gotta put that in the past, but after the probationary period they get, if they're, they work out, they get, it's usually like four to fifty cents, but, you know, y'all will have to sign that to you.
How long probationary period you want?
I think it's usually about six to ninety days, whatever, all the positions are. Cause if she is full-time, ninety days, she would qualify for it.
But then a probationary period.
I'd say sixty days, you're gonna know if she answers the phone, if she shows up when she's supposed to, and does it.
Right, then we'll put her on, and, part-time for sure, and if she works a little bit more, we'll make sure we don't go over forty hours. At ten dollars an hour, and it's gonna be sixty day probationary period. Works out, then we can do it with you. You can motion it.
I'll make a motion. For what you just said.
You did say. Got a motion? You said, all in favor?
Same.
I, um, see, I had an estimate written, this on, uh,
That's for both.
That's for both, and that's on his truck, he's not here.
Almost a thousand dollars.
Truck needs, oh, I run in. What year is that truck?
Stay on there?
Fifty-four. I don't think we've ever done too much to this sort of truck. Well, I'm sorry, Jack, I, I didn't ask if you had anything else other than that.
That's all I can think of right now.
I was, I was, when I picked that up, I was thinking that's one of your vehicles, I thought, well, I better, uh, cover that real quick. I'll come back to that, and then go with, uh, okay, you have a couple things.
So, engine one, well, quick pump test, engine two passed pump test, and engine one did not. There was a pressure release valve, I think it was a pressure volume, that was messed up, I got an estimate on, but never got, was able to turn it in. Uh, I got an estimate on that tonight, and then here just recently, we have had engine two given issues and not, uh, not going into pump gear. So I also have an estimate on that, these two are worst case scenarios, so, please don't freak out when you see that. Also, um, there's a service charge there for bolt estimates, which some of that's off, because if he comes down, does bolt one time, then he won't have to, uh, go and charge the same service charge twice. So, um, engine one with it? Engine one will not pass pump test unless this pressure volume valve is fixed, so, cause it makes it work with correct water. Uh, currently right now, that's the only truck we have optimal working, that's operable. Um, engine two will not go into pump gear. So, it'll have to have the actuator rebuilt and transfer case, which means the transfer case had to be dropped. Um, it's got transmission, our transfer case for it, it's leaking past. It's got transmission, or transfer case fluid that's leaking past, and causing it not to function properly. So, uh, we really need it to do backup and going, because right now, it's just a service truck, it's just hauling equipment, it's all the things doing. It can't use pump any water, anything like that. Pay the price when we come down and fix one, it would probably be in our best interest to just get the other one fixed also. So next year, when we pump test, we have two trucks that's certified, rather than just one truck. That'll help with our ISO rating and also helps, you know, two trucks that's working properly.
You said they will knock off a little bit if they come down, they bump up?
Yes, I believe, I believe they, I'm not exactly sure on the service charge they charge. They do charge a cost just to drive down here, um, it's just to set rate that they charge. So if they come down, that cost will come off of, more than two of the repairs. Like the guy told me, um, service tech told me, said that's worst-case scenario, that's if they get in there, they drop the transfer case on the one, and, and all those parts have to be used, that's worst-case scenario. So they may not have to use all those parts, but they don't have to use them, then that cost will, will come down on engine two. And then same thing with engine one, that pressure volume valve.
When can they get here to do that?
I can call them as soon as y'all get the approval, and normally, they're pretty good at trying to get something set up within a week or two weeks, so. I would hope that if I can get the approval tonight, we can have it done by the first of the year. I know Christmas is coming up, that's gonna knock a few days out of the loop, that and New Year's Eve, but, I would hope they can make it down before the first year and get it fixed.
So then I'll talk about, make the timeframe as far as.
No, he said, uh, he said for the engine two, looking at four to five hours, um, for him to get that done. I'm not sure with engine one, how long's the cost, or I mean, hours for him to get that done, but. I would say, he won't be here no more than two days if he doesn't run into any issues, so, and they'll, they'll stay locally, whatever. The other good part is, I'm not sure if Sykes has got anything that they need fixed also, but if they do, I can talk them into getting it fixed while he's down here, they'll cut the service in half, they'll share it between the two departments. So, I can ask them if they have anything.
I could save them a hundred and fifty dollars there.
It would cut it, you know, cut it in half, they'll share the cost, with the expense of coming down and all that. That's a lot of time for what they do, they'll trip with other departments in the area and say, "Hey, we got a service guy coming down. Is there anything I'll be?" And then, uh, split that cost between the two departments.
I think it needs to be done, is that correct?
Yeah, it has to be, yeah.
Carl?
She might have a fire after it got to work.
Want us to motion it now? Make a motion that we allow banner fire equipment to come down and make repairs if necessary on engine one and two. Worst-case scenario is what, I'm sorry, your first name was?
James.
James Broadus tonight, so can't be no more than seventeen twenty-six fifty-six for engine two, and fifteen sixty-four thirty-four for engine one.
All right, second. As far as payment, get this out of capital improvement, that's a pretty good chunk of change to be hanging out of.
I mean, is that allowable out of capital improvement?
Yeah, um, but in engine motion, you need to also include to pay out of capital.
Pay out, say, pay out of capital improvement, fine.
By the way, we can transfer funds out of it, just whatever it costs, is another good trade. Is that okay with everybody?
Somebody's second.
He's the second, isn't he? Okay, Chris second.
Call it there.
Hello, yes?
I have one thing. Talked about earlier in the year, the A F P grant with our S B As and all that. Our S B As are, are not, are gonna be good after January two thousand twenty, so we got a few more in sight going. That grant period is opening up, it's a ninety-five-five grant. Uh, it opens up within the next week or so in December, and it closes in January, it's only open for like a month. Now granted, it'll take several months for them to go through all of the application process and, and everything. To replace the S B As that we have now, that is the total cost, and then replace the gear that's out of compliance. It gives the cost of that also, the total cost, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Our part, it'd be only twelve thousand dollars of that two hundred and forty thousand, if we are awarded a grant. My question tonight is, if it's something we can go forward with with the grant process of application? It's not a guarantee that we're gonna get it, it's just, put it out there, asking the A F P for their funds. And the thing is, they may not fund the whole thing, they may tell us that they'll fund, you know, twenty cents a year, and only twelve or fourteen airbags, but they can, they got the options cut in the bag, so. Apparently, got thirty members on the department, a rookie, thirty members, and our eighteen airbags, it's also quite a different place.
Question, uh, how do we handle as far as this gear? I know that you probably have changeover personnel, but, uh, do you have a way to make sure that once somebody parts it, or parts it?
It's, it's issued out, and it's signed a sheet that states what they get. So if they get a pair of bumper pants, a coat, a helmet, set of gloves, and quick goods, some boots, that's all checked off where they get it. And if they're either bored off the department for not showing up or doing something they shouldn't, and that stuff gets brought back. If not, and they don't return it, then that's a, which is a legal action, it's harder to get them for stealing, or return the ball property, whatever.
Have, have we had any problems with that in the past? I've never heard of complaints.
I don't, yes, I, I don't know. I just, I just took over this.
Yeah.
Last year or six months, I guess.
And these, we didn't have, they just stay?
They stay at the station on the fire trucks. So that's, that's, that S C B A, that comes with the pack itself, which comes with a bottle, comes with a spare bottle also, and comes with mats. People that's qualified is, uh, capital prudent.
Who's writing the grant? I know we, we had a meeting, a special meeting for Jackie's grant, is this a different grant?
Yeah, the one that Jackie and then James was doing the radios is through the S C B A.
Okay, so let's.
And they write, yeah, it's.
That's a separate.
Who's writing this one?
Either I can write it, uh, I did the one back in two thousand seven, when we got the new gear that's out of service now. I can try my best on it and see what we get, or, uh, Betsy Dill from the matter, she drove rants in the fast, and I can give her all the information and work with her, and we can allow her to do it. But, I mean, she charges, my, my take is she charges, if she.
You don't know her?
If she awarded, I just don't know how much.
Actually, you said, which week?
I was told that it will, the grant will open up probably sometime next week. There's not a definite date, it's like, they had a seminar basically the other day, a webcast, that went over all the, the regulations and regulations and all that stuff, and then they basically told again that it will be opening up sometime during the period of December, it would last for a month, two months in January. So I guess it is, uh, sometime next week, your fall application period open up, and then it'll close by the end of, of January or sort of thereafter.
So tonight, you just asking for, uh?
Just approval.
Approval for?
For the applicant. Right, if you have the application, then if we do get awarded, can we turn over that twelve thousand dollars?
This, this is the way I feel about it. If my house catches on fire, I want these guys to have the right equipment to put it out.
My, my thoughts are, if you, if you look at it, basically, um, one S C B A's seventy-five hundred dollars, one set of turnout gears, thirty-five hundred, so you're looking at seven, about eleven hundred dollars. So our cost is almost, or a little bit over the cost of one set of gear and one S C B A. And we're getting, if they give it to us, thirty cents a year and eighteen S B As.
So this, this thirty cents of personal protective turnout gear, you said it's out of compliance because of tenure rules? So if we get these new ones, they're gonna have a tenure span that they'll be out of compliance then too? And also, the S C B As, they'll be out?
Ten years, fifteen.
Fifteen, oh, I see, yeah, fifteen years, okay.
Yeah, okay. The bottles we have are about, what do they got, two or three more months left on them, maybe?
Till June. If they go out in June. If that isn't June, we won't have, we won't have the equipment for that in June, so. I mean, if, if we don't get awarded by then, we're gonna be hurting until we hear something, or until we, we can do something. Whether, like I said, the U S D A said we can go through them for another grant, but it's a fifty-fifty, so we're paying more money, and you're looking at half of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that's a big chunk of change.
So tonight, you just made a motion to write the grant from us, is that what you mean?
Yes, with the option, if it is awarded later on, you know.
Yeah, we need, we need stipulation that if we, that, you know. We do get the award, that we.
We have the funds to pay for it.
We will to pay the, uh, out.
We'll make a motion that we give the authority for James to write the grant, uh, and if the grant is awarded, then, uh, we'll pay the twelve thousand dollars, which is a five percent of the grant that will come out of capital improvement.
Got a motion, go closer.
All right, second.
You say, hi, okay. All right, that's all we got. You guys all get it, right? All right, that's all we got. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Call it there.
How's the electronic meters working now?
Are they working out?
They're holding down about twenty minutes.
Uh, we, they're working great, we had, we had, uh, I think we had one, I don't know what, if it did not function, or what happened, it, it, uh, it wouldn't reach. But I didn't use all the, because I found out what's, what's going on with the line. The glitch.
Did everyone have a little repeater over there on the water tower?
It's radioing about twenty minutes, we're still waiting.